Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Welcome, everyone. This is the Monday, March 12 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We are going from open session to executive session because as Chair I declare that to not go into executive session would impair our position in the various items. There are five items, all under General Laws Chapter 38, Section 21, either Sections 3 or 6. The first one is vote to affirm collective bargaining agreement with library union. The next is to discuss resolution of all turbine litigation. The next is a status update on the potential purchase of Liberty Green project site. The next is review of Liberty Green hack appeal. And the last is to review the Ballarat Homeowners Association versus Town of Falmouth.
Second?
All those in favor?
Madam's in aye.
Moran aye.
Jones aye.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We're just back from executive session. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, March 12. And the first thing on open session, we have a pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I believe we do have a proclamation? No, I was thinking of... Next then, Ms. Braga, recognition.
Sure, so just a couple of quick items. The first really is, you know, recognition of just the incredible work that DPW, Fire, and Police Department did in response to the last storm. And of course, this is, you know, on the eve before what is predicted to be another very big storm, so I thank you in advance. And I know I saw on social media and then got lots of, you know, phone calls and emails from individuals just really praising the very quick work in what was really, you know, unprecedented. A lot of folks had damage that was, you know, it was far worse than even Hurricane Bob, some of the flooding that took place. So huge thanks to those individuals who put in a lot of extra hours. I know DPW and Fire and Police are preparing right now and they will have all, you know, staff available to really meet the needs as best they can for the coming storm. So thank you for what they did previously and in advance for what they're about to do.
Can I just tag on to that, just to say, I ran into one of the dispatchers from our Consolidated Dispatch Center and had a quick interchange with her. And I want to echo that because she was relaying just how much hard work was being done by all the people that she was communicating with and how completely exhausted they were, but they just kept working and working and working. I know a lot of people were a little frustrated that they didn't get their power back, but I mean, they were trying to get as many people back as quickly as possible. And there's always going to be a few people who are in that situation where their power doesn't come up. And I know it happened to me in Hurricane Bob, where we were an isolated community and everybody around us had power. They finally got to us.
No, it was really, you know, a lot of damage, so we thank everyone for their work. And also, a huge thank you to Diane Davidson, as well as to the individuals at the Falmouth Yacht Club, also in particular Jessica Fox, for really putting together the nuts and bolts of the potluck that took place last Friday. The Board had come up with the idea of hosting a potluck for all the town committees and inviting the members of the town committees to come, so that it's just an event for us to share a meal, get to know each other, break down some of those communication barriers. You know, so many of us get involved in the particular committee or board that we're on that we don't get to make those connections outside, those personal connections. It was a really unbelievable event. I think the turnout was far better than we ever thought it would be on a Friday night. It was a packed event. And Diane went really above and beyond coordinating. It's not a small thing to coordinate a potluck event for all of the committees that are in this town and to make sure that you have a balance of all the things that you need. And the staff really made it just a seamless event. It was wonderful and hopefully, you know, the first of more to come. So a very big thank you there as well.
Two things on that before your announcement on that subject. So that's a new perk. If you join a committee in Falmouth, we're hoping to make it an annual event. And I just, so we're not, we're not above bribery here. You know, we really depend on our volunteers. And just to mention solid waste was on top of having the event completely recyclable and so that there was really no waste generated. Mary Bunkerreiter was there, compost me. And also, thanks to the yacht club for really enlisting their own staff in that effort. So thanks in that regard. Doug, you had an announcement?
I just want to go back to the, about the emergency starting tomorrow. Mr. Suso has pointed out to me that the Emergency Operations Center will be opening starting at 7:00 AM tomorrow. And the phone call for, the phone number to reach people, because what I did hear also in this last event is the number of times when the DPW was informed about things, they were able to respond very quickly. If they don't hear, it's much harder for them to respond to what they don't hear about. So if there are issues, please call 508-495-2602. And that will be starting 7:00 AM tomorrow morning for any issues you may have. And that's part of the Consolidated Dispatch Center.
Okay. And along those lines, Town Hall will be open until otherwise notified. Correct, Mr. Suso?
Correct, Madam Chair.
A couple more announcements?
One more, too, when you get ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I want to give recognition to the Falmouth Education Foundation and all those folks that showed up to support it. This was the Saturday of the big storm. Most of those people had no electricity that showed up, but it turned out to actually be a very successful fundraising event. And it supports scholarships and special programs that teachers offer. They submit applications for grants and field trips and that sort of thing. It was quite a remarkable thing to see so many people showing up when they had to negotiate around streets that were blocked by roads and power that they didn't have in their houses, but they still came out. I think it's really an indication of how generous and supportive this community is of our public school education program. So just want to offer that one as well.
Great testimony. Doug?
I was pretty impressed that so many kids turned up for the science fair as well on Saturday. The high school gym was packed with all these little scientists running around with all the displays.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it was pretty surprising.
Sorry, just what, this has gone on for a long recognition, but a lot went on. But just to Sam's point, Falmouth Education Foundation has given over $800,000 to their schools here in Falmouth in the 12 years that they've been in existence. And that doesn't include whatever they generated from this gala. So really phenomenal organization run by folks, you know, right here in our community and benefiting our students and teachers right here in this community. So good stuff.
Absolutely. I also want to announce that on April 4th, for anyone who's interested with respect to Liberty Green, there will be a tour of the site by hack here on that day, April 4th. And then at 10 o'clock, there will be a hearing in the Herman Room. It's open to the public. However, the folks that will be testifying will be those just called as witnesses. So if you are interested in that, you know, certainly put that on your calendar and plan to attend.
Sue, could you translate that acronym? It's the Housing Assistance?
Right.
Excuse me, Housing Appeals Committee, I believe.
Right.
It's not the local Housing Assistance Corporation. It's the statewide-
It's the state.
Housing Appeals Committee. So people, we use the word, the acronym hack, it could be two different bodies, and this is a very different one from our local Housing Assistance Corporation.
Good point. Final announcement, I'm just extending the, on behalf of the Board, our condolences with respect to the death of Fifi Burton, including to her son Mike Burton. I just have a couple of background facts about Fifi. She, she did most recently write a couple of letters to the editor. You'd, now and again, you'd see those and always important civic-minded issues. She was instrumental in committees which included the Christmas Parade, the Road Race Wheelchair Board, the 1986 Tricentennial Hospital Auxiliary Substance Abuse Committee. She's one of the actual founders of Friends of Falmouth Dogs, past president of the Samaritans, member of the Artists Guild, many, many things. FCTV Board, member of the Minot Yacht Club. And in 1995, she received a Woman of the Year Award by the Falmouth Business and Professional Women's Organization. And in 2016, she received the OCAC, Cape Cod Military Support Foundation Award for over 30 years of service. Fifi, we will miss you. And just a moment of silence for her. Thank you.
I have two other announcements.
Please.
Also to remind people that the applications for the Charter Review Committee, the deadline is this Friday on the 15th. And we are looking forward to, by 4:30, the applications are available in the Selectmen's office. And we will then be conducting interviews about two weeks after that, so it'd be great to have that. And also, there's the Kuna Mesut River?
Yes. So just a message from Dr. Betsy Gladfelter that, just a reminder that construction work will continue along the lower Kuna Mesut River through April and into early May. When there's active construction activity, only authorized personnel, which means those wearing heart hats and safety vests are allowed on the site and along the trails. And equipment will need to use the bog roads to access both sides of the river. So if people are driving by it, it doesn't look very pretty right now, but it's all part of the process. And just, I think her main concern is safety with all of that equipment, just to stay away while the work is going on.
Great, thank you. Next, we have a public comment, an opportunity for anyone who may want to speak about an issue that's not on the agenda. There are two minutes if there's anyone here. Grant, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Grant Walker, 71 Philadelphia Street, one of 27 precinct three town meeting representatives. Two recommendations I'm delivering to you tonight. First, I'm recommending that you put all of the comments and suggestions and questions about the wind turbines that have come in in the last couple of months since you opened up that period, if you could make them available on the town website. And second recommendation is that each and every individual member of the Board of Selectmen do what you and Mr. Duffy and Mr. Suso did for the town. Each individual member of the Board, I hope will do with Falmouth Community Television, a brief presentation of your own individual thinking about the turbines and about the questions, suggestions, recommendations that have come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is to vote to affirm the appointment of the Superintendent of Parks Tree Warden. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my, it's my great pleasure to recommend the appointment of Jeremiah Pearson as the new Superintendent of Parks and Tree Warden for the Town of Falmouth, succeeding Rocky Gomes. Mr. Pearson would be returning to Falmouth Town Employment, where he worked previously as a forestry crew leader for four years. And most recently, Jeremiah has been employed as tree warden for the Town of Bardstable, where he has supervised a crew of 12 staff members. Jeremiah is a certified arborist and he is scheduled to join our staff later in the month of March. I do recommend that the Board vote to affirm my appointment of Jeremiah Pearson as both Superintendent of Parks and Tree Warden, subject to your concurrence. And Mr. Pearson is in attendance with us here tonight. And perhaps he might care to make a few comments if that would be the desire of the Board.
That would be great. In fact, if you'd just come up and introduce yourself, that would be great, so we can put a face to a name.
Should we put the motion first, or?
Hello.
Welcome. Sure, let's do the motion.
I move that we affirm the appointment of Jeremiah Pearson as our tree warden and-
Superintendent.
Superintendent of Parks.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now officially.
Thank you. I feel honored to come back as a superintendent and to give back to the community that I live and grew up in. Thank you.
Question?
Sure.
I noticed that almost all of your background is in tree maintenance and remediation and that sort of thing.
Yep.
But we have this huge problem with our athletic fields. I just wondered, you know, do you have a plan for how we're going to be able to address those? I know we've, we've had a consultant come in and take a look at all this. I, that's the one thing in the, in your background that I didn't see.
Right, and I do have a background in turf.
Excellent, good to hear.
And, you know, talking with Peter, we are coming up with a plan.
Thank you, that's all I need to hear.
Well, believe me, we'll have a good one.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you, Members of the Board.
Next, we have vote to affirm appointment of the Town Planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second of three recommended appointments this evening. I've appointed Mr. Thomas Bott to the position of Falmouth Town Planner, subject to the concurrence this evening of the Board of Selectmen. Tom has served as the Town Planner of Kingston, Massachusetts since 1998. Prior to that, he worked as the Urban Planner and Planning Manager for the City of Marietta, Georgia from 1994 to 1998. He has a Master of City Planning degree from Georgia Institute of Technology and a Bachelor's Degree from the University of North Florida. And he's a member in good standing of multiple professional associations. Tom and his family are residents of Plymouth. And in addition to my recommendation that you affirm this appointment, I would be requesting that you waive the residency requirement, given Tom's close proximity to the Town of Falmouth. And Tom Bott is with us here this evening as well, and we would welcome his comments if that would be appropriate. Also, Madam Chair.
I would move to affirm the appointment of Thomas Bott as a new Town Planner.
Second.
And to waive the residency requirement.
Second, I'll agree with that.
Just one comment, though.
Discussion?
Could it be like a limited waive, or would it be, does it have to be permanent? I mean, I would think after he gets settled in for a few years, maybe he'd want to move to Falmouth? We'll ask him, right?
I think we'll just take the motion as it stands.
Yeah, I think, you know as well as we do that the housing costs here are not minimal.
So we have a motion and a second?
Aye. Just on the discussion of that, he has been living in Plymouth for 20 years. I would think the, I'm certainly hopeful that he will love Falmouth enough that he'll want to, but I would not want to put any requirement on it. I talked to Mr. Suso about this. I do agree with his assessment that Mr. Bott's commitment to this town will be of top notch, most important, and I don't think it will be in any way minimized because he's living in Plymouth.
All right.
Okay, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you unanimously.
Would you like to be introduced?
I'll have a question for you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. Suso. I'm Tom Bott. I'm pleased and I'm humbled to be, the opportunity to be the Falmouth Town Planner. It's a term you'll hear me repeat again. I want to thank you and the Board for your confidence. I've been a planner in Commonwealth for about 20 years or so now. And I bring to the position those sort of requisite skills that are necessary. I have a slightly thicker-than-average skin and I have a sense of humor. And I don't want this to sound like any sort of challenge, but frankly, there's nothing you can say to me that I'm going to take umbrage with. I need to hear from people. I talk to people. It's a terrible role model for my small children because I talk to strangers. But I'm happy to be here and I look forward to meeting you and learning more about your town. I typically ask the folks that I'm going to be working with, planning board members, Board of Selectmen members, to take me on a tour of your Falmouth, show me your Falmouth, the things that you like, the things that we can work on. I don't take science. I have a dog and a cat. So every night when I come home, Miles loves me. And Sterling sort of gives me a sideways look and says, dude, is that all you got? I've been learning about your town. It's something that I won't quit doing, something you have to do all the time. I attended the joint session of January 27th of the Planning Board, the Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board of Health, Affordable Housing Committee, and the Water Quality Management Committee. I'm sorry if I missed anybody. And then later, the listening session at Falmouth High School to find out more about your community. And I feel and I welcome the way that a lot of people put on the Town Planner. I work maybe of a noble profession, maybe speaking from the pulpit, I might tell you that, you know, there's no vision, the people will perish. But planners are not like ministers. We're not so dire, although living at sea level, there's things, there are truths that you just can't get around. Planners are more like optometrists. We're helping you focus on your vision and work at that sort of thing. And keep in mind, sometimes your optometrist needs corrective lenses as well. So I'm very eager to be here. I'm very excited to be here over the next few months. I'll be meeting, as I did in Kingston, with many boards and committees as I can. Invite myself to find out who you are and what you do and introduce myself. I'm pleased and I'm humbled to be the Town Planner in Falmouth, Mass. And I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
I'm sure I speak for the entire Board. I mean, I think we all saw you so much in town that we just thought we'd made the appointment and maybe forgot about it. appointment and maybe forgot about it, that you were really, you know, at such a high level of interest, and that's exactly what Falmouth, you know, kind of brings out in all of us, and we really appreciate you, you know, kind of showing that side of you right up front. So thanks for that, and welcome to the community.
Professional skills that you have on your resume are very impressive, but serving as a crew of the Mayflower II is a thing that I really, really struck fun.
Yes, I'm a volunteer at the plantation, and I'm on the crew of the Mayflower II, have been since two thousand and seven. My ship currently is in, in dry dock, in Mystic, but it will be back, and I anticipate sailing on it on, in two thousand and twenty. If it's a weekend, I won't ask for some time off, but if it's a weekday, I may be pressed into asking for some time off. It's an awesome, awesome thing to do. It's, it's one of my favorite volunteer gigs.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Next, we have vote to affirm the appointment of the Director of Information Technology.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The third appointment that I bring to the Board this evening, I'm very pleased to do so. Again, I've appointed Mr. Gregory Banworth as Falmouth Director of Information Technology, subject to the affirmation of the Board. Greg comes to us following an extensive search and interview process from a number of qualified candidates. He has worked as an information technology consultant since two thousand and fourteen. From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen, Greg served as the Chief Information Officer for Cape Cod Community College. He was also Chief Information Officer of Wheelock College from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven. He has a Bachelor's Degree from the University of the South and a Master's Degree from Georgia College and State University. Greg resides in the town of Sandwich. In addition to recommending his appointment, I am requesting that the Board waive the residency requirement, given Greg's close proximity to the town of Falmouth as well. And Greg is in attendance with us here tonight, and I'd welcome him making a few comments if that would be the pleasure of the Board.
I would move to affirm the appointment of Gregory Banworth to the Director of Information Technology and to waive the residency requirement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please. Got a couple of Georgia folks here in the audience, I see. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Board. It is an absolute pleasure to be here and really getting excited to hit the ground running come the end of March and work with the town and get to know the nuances, and bring the various aspects of my career into the town municipality, and get to know all the different departments and the members of the Board and their wants and needs, and take the department forward through its present challenges and the bright future with technology.
Three very important appointments today. Welcome.
I have to say that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doug.
I was going to just ask, do you think you'll be able to get us up to speed with online permitting?
Yeah, it's definitely something that I've looked at at other institutions, so I think right now the Department is, one of the first things that we're going to be looking at is to fill a position, the Systems Analyst, and kind of take stock of where we are, and then prioritize with the right members around the table of what needs to be addressed and what order. And I'm assuming if permitting's on there, it generally rises to the top pretty quick. So the good news with that is there's a lot of different entities that can drive that forward.
Okay, thanks.
I was actually going to just ask about priorities, but he's sort of answered that question, so, thank you.
Great, we're happy to have you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Greg.
Next on the agenda, we have a summary of action licenses to approve an application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license for the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society four oh eight Carriage Shop Road, Sunday, May twentieth, Saturday, June twenty-third, Sunday, June twenty-fourth, and Saturday, August eighteen.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next, we have to approve an application for a new common victuolo license, Peel Holdings LLC, DVA Peel Pizza Company, thirty-one T-Ticket Highway in Falmouth. Is the applicant here, and could you step to the podium? Yes. Welcome. Can you, tell us a little bit about your application and, and address the occupancy issues, delivery trucks, that kind of thing?
So, we currently...
You know me, sir?
I'm sorry, my name is Brendan Higgins. I live in Duxbury, and we're going to be opening up a, it's more of a scratch kitchen pizzeria. We, we make the dough and the sauce fresh, in-house, every day, and like an open concept, so you can, so the kids can kind of see the guy rolling the dough out and making the dough and making the pizzas, so it's a lot of fun, it's a little interactive, and, yeah, we're going to have about twenty-two to twenty-six seats, I believe. And we will offer delivery to the town and takeout, of course, so you can take it to the beach.
And in terms of your occupancy and parking, can you just...
So there's plenty of parking, as is, on the right side of the structure there, there's that little mall that kind of faces, it almost goes, you know, south into the back of, there's a hair salon, and there's a bunch of other buildings which are, I don't plan on being either rented or restored, but, yeah, there's plenty of parking there as well.
So just for, for folks who don't have the stuff in front of them that we do, this is in the building that's across from Stop &amp; Shop?
Correct, yeah.
Where the old specs?
It's a white, yes, exactly.
Okay, so that's where, that's where the, your spot would be, and you're saying about the parking that goes back into that?
Yes, there's plenty of parking in the back, all the way to the right there, that goes all the way to the end of that structure.
Have you noticed how many pizza places we have in town already?
Yes and no, but it's, it's okay. We do a little bit of a different concept.
All right.
A little bit of a different offering.
Well, it's my family's favorite food, they would eat it every single night, so I welcome more places. We've really burned out every other pizza place.
You'll like it, I promise.
And how many employees do you plan on having?
Well, during the week, it's going to vary. You know, in the summertime, I'm sure we're going to have a lot more than we'll during the fall and winter, but I would say at any time, maybe six to ten employees, but working at any time during the day, I would say anywhere from two or three to five or six, maybe on Saturdays.
The, I'm just looking at a couple of issues of concern, that, so the property itself apparently has a capability of seven units, that, that particular property, and the, the twenty-four seats that you proposed would require twelve spaces just for your patrons.
Correct. I'm not sure as, as to the full number of parking spaces to that whole condominium unit. I do know that, that it is condoed out, and I'm not sure how many of the other units are even open right now. I don't think there's any others besides the, the hair salon.
Well, we, as the Board, we have to look to the future and assume it's going to be full when we're looking at your application. And then also, just a consideration with respect to traffic impact and cross-traffic coming in and out of T-Ticket Highway, I'm not sure whether you might have considered like a right-turn-only sign, if, I guess that would be the right side of, if it's the shop that I'm thinking about, or, or like, are there lines in the parking lot, for example?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Okay.
Although I think some are a bit faded. So you can get into it from the back entrance, right, off of Worcester Court?
Right.
And when you come through that back entrance, or then right on Davis Strait, so I don't know, you're not buying the building, are you?
No, I'm renting it.
Okay, so are there term, I mean, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty, but I'm, I think maybe what we're concerned about is just making sure that the terms around the parking are clear...
Right.
For your particular business, so that, you know, there aren't issues down the road when hopefully those other buildings are filled, although the...
I do know that the owner did say that they do want to redo the parking lot eventually.
So that, hopefully, will help you out a little bit with your...
But, yeah, but if we need to do a right-only turn at a certain point, that won't be an issue.
Sam?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I know it's been a while, but I remember when Iguanas was a restaurant in there and handled, you know, the business in and out. I don't know how many more of those units have been filled and with what types of businesses that might have increased the number of parking that would be required, but certainly that area has handled that kind of traffic. But I guess it would really be up to the landlord to make that a right-turn-only coming out onto the T-Ticket Highway, Davis Straits Road, but it's certainly something I think we should be considering, because that is a very busy intersection, and you've got not only people coming south on Twenty-eight A, I guess it's what, or maybe it's considered to be north, but you have the turn lane that goes on to Worcester Court as well. So that makes it very difficult for somebody coming out of there to make a left turn, and then, of course, you have the changing light and the traffic that comes transiently on. You wouldn't want to see somebody sticking out, blocking that southbound lane. I guess that's the one that's heading toward T-Ticket anyway. So I think there are issues that need to be addressed, but they probably need to be addressed with the landlord and not with this particular business.
They also can't exit by going past TD Bank.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I'm well aware of that. And that's, to me, that would be the obvious exit.
Right.
And there is a lot, I mean, again, I don't know who owns, if the parking lot is parceled out and if it's owned by, but there's a lot of parking, goes all the way around to the side that's not part of TD Bank, so.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of parking.
It's a pretty big lot.
In the back. And you're applying for a food service establishment license?
Yes.
Great. Any other questions?
I just, I see you're wearing a shirt already, is it because you're enthusiastic, or have you, do you have another one of these?
We do have other shops, yes, I was working there and I drove here this morning. We have, the first one opened up in Hingham, I would say about four and a half years ago, and we have one in Duxbury, Milton, and in Cohasset.
Are we going to be able to afford this pizza, because those are expensive?
Yes.
Are they going to be Falmouth versions of the Cohasset and Duxbury pizzas?
Yes, yes.
No, that's great. I would move approval.
I'd second that, because, you know, it'd be nice to see some business in that plaza.
You just want to see the pizza fly up into the ceiling.
I'll be there.
All those in favor?
Does it need to be...
Aye.
Well, he will be applying, and he can't open without the health certificate.
Right.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thanks so much.
Good luck.
No, no, we didn't. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to vote to accept fiscal year eighteen wellness grant from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group in the amount of six hundred dollars to the Personnel Department grant amount. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move we accept the wellness grant?
Which, thanks.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, under administrative orders, to approve a proposal to license location of Lawrence Lynch Corp. sign at three ninety-six Gifford Street, subject to sign review approval. Mr. Suso, this is kind of a unique situation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it is. This location on Gifford Street, I believe the Board has some information related to this proposal. We're all familiar with the location of Lawrence Lynch, a company that the town has worked with, among many, many others, for the important work that they do, and the, and the important resources that they provide. On that portion of Gifford Street, there is a large green space, which, curiously, is actually part of the original road right-of-way that is immediately in front of the Lawrence Lynch Building. So in order for them to erect a sign, it had to follow a little different procedure, which involved Town Council Frank Duffy assisting in drafting a license agreement, so that with the approval of the Board, Lawrence Lynch could be licensed to erect a sign identifying their business at that location, and as you have noted, it would be subject to sign review approval, which is a matter of standard procedure, but the Sign Review Committee was not comfortable making a recommendation absent a decision by the Board to grant such a license. So they would await your potential action on this. We also have Chris Lynch in attendance here, if the Board might have any questions, or in the event Mr. Lynch might have any comments. I also want to thank him for his patience in working through, with us through this process, because it, as has been noted, it's a little different than the normal process we have to follow.
And so would this be coming back to us after sign review, or no?
No, it would not be.
Thank you.
I would move that we grant a license to Lawrence Lynch Corporation for the sign on town property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It easy?
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Actually, it looks like that road maybe actually went much closer to the building at one time, and they took some of that sharp curve out, and that's what created that very large road of...
Correct.
...way there in front of their facility, so it seems quite reasonable.
Thanks. Next, we have to approve an EverSource Energy and Verizon New England petition to install one new pole on Sandwich Road north of Tamarack Road. Any discussion, Doug?
Mr. Suso, we didn't give him a chance to ask this, this time. I would love to have a representative from Verizon and EverSource next time they are applying for a pole. If there's any way we could have someone come and chat with us about this, just so we can have face-to-face communication about some of our issues.
Happy to request that.
As opposed to doing it all through paperwork. I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They weren't punishing us last, during that last storm, were they?
I don't know, they did a pretty decent job, so I don't think so.
I agree.
I didn't get my power to anything late, late, late Sunday night, so maybe it's...
So that's your beef, huh? I live over in...
Next, we have to execute a discharge of mortgage on sixty Lucerne Avenue. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I confess, I don't recall all the details of this. I know that copies are made available to the Board. I don't know if Town Council is able to help me with this one being in attendance. I think...
You have a history on it.
Does this one ring a bell, Frank, if you would? Thank you.
This would help. It's a bit unusual.
Frank Duffy, Town Council. Some time ago, the Planning Board had a program where they loaned money to certain homeowners for improvements, mainly energy-related improvements. This is one of the loans that they granted. The loan has been paid off in full, and the homeowner is entitled to a discharge of the mortgage. I think the problem is that we, this was sent over here some time ago. I believe you signed it once before, but it can't be located, so you're just being asked to do it again.
Okay. I, I move approval, and I can see the original date is June, so I know that, I'm sure that they're anxious that, they're anxious to get this recorded, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report by the Waterways Committee. Through the year, the Board of Selectmen takes reports from various committees, and it's just as well, town meetings sometimes has reports, but in this instance, we're doing the waterways. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Thomas, I'm the Chairman of the Waterways, and I did have a presentation. Is that, is that loaded up?
We, we did, I'll get it in.
Yeah, we, we've looked at, just if other people want to see it.
Yeah. FCTV needs it.
Yep. No, it's on the other side.
Yeah. Basically, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to talk about what we did last year in two thousand and seventeen, what we still have on like twenty eighteen, and we can't have any kind of discussion about waterways unless we talk about dredging, because that's kind of an emotional and an issue with everybody. So at the end of the presentation, the last part of the presentation, I don't want to call it a primer, but I, it's kind of our position statement and some facts on dredging. So it should kind of frame why we do things or why we're perceived of not doing things.[1743.12] So it should kind of frame why we do things or why we're perceived of not doing things. So as I go through what we did and what we're going to do this year, if you have specific dredging questions, I'd rather just wait until my last section and I'm hoping to anticipate all the questions and I'm hoping to address it. Yes?
Jeff, you need to introduce yourself and pick that mic up and carry it with you.
Okay, sorry.
Say to other people at home watching TV.
I'm Jeff Thomas, I'm the chairman of the Waterways Committee. I'm not going to go through this whole thing, but our mission statement is to protect, maintain, and develop and improve the navigable Waterways and public resources of the town of Falmouth through transparent and environmentally sound means. And I'll just skip to the end as our authority is from Town Bylaws, Chapter 231. We have a full committee. What's unique about this committee is we have six appointed members, one permanent member, and that's Chuck Martinson, he's the board of health rep, and we also have Greg Fraser as a non-voting member as our Director of Marine Environmental Services. So last year, we finished the West Falmouth Town Dock Project. What was left in 2017 was pretty much the parking lot issues and the final drainage issues, and the DPW actually managed that part of the project. It was a total project of $400,000 and it, and we included new dinghy floats, $16,000 worth of materials, and the labor was donated by Upper Cape Tech. They did a phenomenal job and you'll see later that we're using them again, and they're glad to work with us and we're glad to take their resources. White's Landing, that was kind of a little disaster. That was the one where the state specked out the boat ramp too high on the low tide mark and the boats didn't have enough water to launch the boats. So last year, they were able, they were able to redesign it and the state came in and they fixed the issue. And the ramp is now working. What's left is a $265,000 project that our DPW is working on, is we, we included, there's a new road this year, a new sidewalk. The Waterways really isn't working and it's now the DPW project, but between the two initiatives, we're getting a phenomenal difference in the usability of that area and that road. Robbins Road Bulkhead, they had Falmouth Inner Harbor, that was a $750,000 project, which was the repair, the electrical, the lighting, the walkway, the stormwater improvements. We went to town meeting for an extra thousand, $100,000 last year because when they uncovered the electrical system, they found some things they didn't realize were there. The Il Pond Bridge Dock was refurbished with the assistance of the Barnstable County Sheriff inmates. We have a new pump-out boat, thanks to the new Clean Vessel Act. That didn't really cost us anything. And then, there's a Phase 1 construction last year, the Caleb's and Bob's Pond Fish Run, there was $29,000 left over from the North Falmouth Fishwater Project, which is still under the auspices of the Department of Marine and Fisheries, so that's why it's mentioned in this list. And then we did dredging. Wild Inner Harbor, that was actually a 2015 project where we redid the bulkhead. But what, and this will make more sense when I reach the dredging discussion at the end, but it took us two years to actually complete the dredging part of this, which we originally thought was 1,600 yards, material actually turned out to be 7,300 yards. That was done and we were able to put it on the town property outside the jetty. We also did the maintenance dredging for the Bourne's Pond Approach, the Green Pond Inlet, the Great Pond Inlet, Trunk River Inlet, Salt Pond Inlet, Fresh River Inlet, and Little Pond Inlets. This year, we have Simpson's Landing Bulkhead. It's, a lot of it's deteriorated. It's a $200,000 project and we've got bids going out next month. We're replacing the docks, the town docks on Harrington Street and Great Pond and in Little Harbor. This is another material-only task because the labor's from Upper Cape Tech High School. We're also adding new lighted pilings. The jetty at McCoy Bay Inlet was missing, so that's going back. Because of a request from the folks from Great Harbors, we thought it was a great idea, and as a boater going into Great Pond myself at night, it's really tough out there, so we're adding another piling with an extra light as part of this program. And then, for the marina, we're putting in a new reservations management system. It's changing from a digital res, which is not really designed for marinas, to a DAWA system, which is about the same cost, and it's going to give the town a lot more capability. And then, there's going to be a new warning management system going in place this year. They're looking at the vendor now to replace the in-house program. Now, this was as of yesterday. Hopefully tomorrow or later this week, it won't change, from storm winter damage, we've only had one loose piling and one missing piling and.
Could you just knock on wood right there?
Yeah.
Don't say it too loud either.
The West Falmouth Dock Floats, there was a request from the West Falmouth Yacht Club. The way that, it's a wonderful design, but, but it, it's hard for the boats to come up and then get up onto the dock, especially at low tide. So they want to put some new floats there. We have $3,000 left that we didn't use in the project that we're going to use for the cost permits to amend it, but it's 4.8K. The West Falmouth Yacht Club, we believe, is going to come up with the extra funds to finish the permitting. And then, we're working with them to come up with a design for this material, which we don't have budgeted, and hopefully they'll come up with that and we'll again engage the Upper Cape Tech to supply the labor. And the planned dredging this year, our normal maintenance dredging went last year from town meeting from 50,000 to 100,000, and we're going to be doing Il River Approach, Green Pond and Great Pond Inlets and Bourne's Pond Inlets. All four of those are, as of right now, are navigational issues. Hopefully, the storm won't make it worse. And our future task right now, Il Pond and Woods Hole, docks there, McGansett and Green Pond need to be replaced, and I'm calling it a dredging navigational pain point. Il River is the next point of concern for this town in terms of filling in, and there's a lot of homeowners there that are upset, and we've got to work out a plan with them of what we're going to do in the future. And then, there's also the continual monitoring of embayments for dredging. I know Great Pond may not need it this year, but it may need it the year after. We've got to look ahead and see what those needs are going to be. So, any questions so far?
I have one.
What, Doug?
Is there any way that we can, I mean, you know, the Perch Pond over in Great Pond, I know that the people in there have boats and docks and they're really not able to get out. And I know that they applied and were denied by the Conservation Commission because there's too many clams in there. But is there any other creative way that that can be dredged? Maybe some environmentally friendly dredging rather than just saying no? It seems unfair that these people spent all this money and effort and put these docks in, and it was previously dredged, but now it's allowed to fill in.
I, I would have to defer that comment to the Conservation Commission.
Right.
Because there have been more cases than not where the Conservation Commission has been in a different position than the Waterways in terms of navigation versus conservation.
Yeah.
We do not know a solution to that Perch Pond issue from the Waterways perspective.
Right.
As a matter of fact, one of our voting members and one of our non-voting members is citing the Conservation Commission on that right now.
Okay.
So, I, and I actually live near there as well, and my boat is right outside of Perch Pond, so I, I, I don't know the answer either.
It seems it would be better for the water quality too, you know, to have some flushing in there. Okay, thanks anyway.
Sam?
Jeff, I wanted to ask you, you seem to say that you're doing all these projects, and I'm not certain about the separation between the Waterways Committee and Marine Environmental Services Group. Are you advisory to the Marina South?
Yeah.
Department?
They're just going to us for, as an advisory capacity. They're doing the work.
Thanks.
We're monitoring and it comes budget and going to town meetings, we're the ones that are helping to vote the Marine Environmental, basically to get their agreements through our committee.
Megan?
Just, just a comment, more than a question, but just along the lines of, to some degree, what Doug is asking, but, you know, just thinking going forward as we're expanding our aquaculture and, you know, thinking about doing, you know, sort of rotational leases and things like that, you know, I assume, especially since the, you know, Greg and Chuck are, you know, sitting on that committee with you, that there are forward-looking discussions about how that aquaculture could affect, you know, options for dredging certain places, you know, depending on, especially if people have leases and are expecting to have equipment in at certain times of year. So I'm assuming you guys are sort of thinking about that as you look at the dredging needs going forward and how that intersects with, with an expanded aquaculture here.
We certainly will be looking at that. We do not have a plan right now that's addressing that, but we certainly will be. So I want to get into our biggest challenge, and the biggest challenge is dredging. And that's where we spend, the Waterways spends 80% of its activity managing that. We're always having the, especially the south-facing areas, time windows are a problem, permitting is a problem in terms of time and efforts on getting it or not getting it, and then cost and capacity. And I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to illustrate some of these. Problem number one is the time window. We don't have 12 months to dredge. We only have four to five months a year to dredge. And the basic issue really is, we call it time of year. There's an aquatic species propagation window where we're not allowed to dredge by the state from January 15th to June 30th. We also have the beach nourishment restrictions, pretty much because of shorebirds, and that is effective April 1st to August 31st. So when you look at that, we only really have a window of about four to five months a year in order to get the dredging done. Now, there's some emergency dredging capabilities and we'll talk about that in a minute. But all of this always factors in and people get frustrated when you say, you know, "We have the money, why can't we dredge now?" Well, we have to wait until the next season in order to do it. So that's one issue is our, our time of year restrictions that we have to face. The other issue is the whole timeline that it takes to basically start, when you assess the need to dredge, to dredge, and then you get your funding, you do your engineering and your permitting, and you get the funding for the execution, and you factor in the time of year restrictions and then the execution. It could actually be a couple of years, and the Wild Harbor is a good example. We finished the project in 2015 and because we dealt with all these other time blocks, it took us another two years to make that harbor a little more usable. And that's a point of frustration on everybody who comes to us and say, "Why can't you dredge? We have the money, we have the permits." So it could go from several months to years. Now, there's also three types of dredging. There's approach dredging, inlet dredging, and embayment dredging. And what the difference is, I use Great Pond as an example, approaches are coming into the inlets. The reason I'm mentioning these three is because they all have different parameters and different requirements for time of year restrictions and permits. The embayment is inside the ponds and the inlet is going right up. In this particular case, it's going from the, outside the jetties up to the bridges. So the general dredging rules are for the aquatics time of year restrictions, we don't really need them for approaches because they're not considered areas where there's aquatic Beach nourishment, no matter what we do for dredging, issue is where are we going to put the sand? We put it on the beaches, and this is really coastal resilience issue. All that sand on the beaches ends up back and then we have to dredge it again in the future. But when we do finally get these permits and are able to dredge, one of the issues is where are we putting the sand? And that's not always something that's easy to solve. Inlets, we can get waivers for critical needs, like all those south coasting, south-facing coastal inlets that I mentioned, Great Pond, Green Pond, Bourne's Approach, and Il Pond. They're all like, right now, some of them are three feet or less. For the last two storms, they were three feet or less. We're going after the permits right now for the yearly dredging. And then there's embayments. Embayments waivers are not allowed for the aquatics. So like Perch Pond, for example, that's another good example. Or if we wanted to dredge Great Pond, we would have to dredge that in the timeframe of the year where we could do it without affecting the aquatic life. Falmouth has a 10-year comprehensive dredging permit. It's with the state and the Army Corps of Engineers, and that allows us, I have it at the end of this, I'm not going to bore you with the details for your reference, but there's 14 inlets and 11 beach areas that we're allowed to use for nourishment. It currently expires in 2022, or, and eventually we'll go to town meeting for $35,000, which is the cost for the new permit. We also have an associated Conservation Commission permit, and that's every three years, and that expires in 2020. The state allows us up to five waivers per year for this, for the aquatics, and it's only the south-facing inlets only. And the state exception is from Woods Hole to Hyannis, but that's not just Falmouth, that's anybody on the south-facing coast. Normally, we're the only ones who require it. This past year, however, we were told that the Steamship Authority decided that they needed to dredge their terminals out, so they, they've already taken this year one of the five exceptions. And we're also having a problem this year, it hasn't been solved yet, but normally, we just go to the DEP and it's not like a rubber stamp. The gentleman understands our needs and he was approving it, and this year, he retired, and we're getting a little resistance on getting these approved. So right now, we don't know if we're going to be able to dredge those south-facing inlets. It's a yearly process, the county surveys, the targeted south, the targeted south-facing inlets, and this year, they did it in the middle of, to end of February, that's how we have the data. And like I had mentioned, those are before the last two storms, and they already show that because of the previous winter activity, they need to be dredged.
So Jeff, are you suggesting that the current DEP DMF staff are not familiar with Falmouth? So, you, you know, that brings to mind perhaps inviting new staff down for a tour that would really be an investment in the future for the upcoming issues.
I, I would really like to have the discussion with Greg Fraser, who's been the one talking to them. The gentleman who was there, the way it worked is the DEP approved it and the DMF, Department of Marine Fisheries, really didn't have a prior, primary approval that DEP did. The DEP now is deferring to the DMF, and the DMF is more oriented towards.
Fisheries.
Fisheries.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a matter of two different organizations, one of which was the major controller and the other one wasn't. But I wanted to make sure, Greg wanted to make sure this was here so everyone knew it was a problem, and we may have to, to take some action on that if he's not successful.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So, it seems like we often are doing our dredging in the late winter and spring, and that's why we need these exceptions, but if we could get it done in the fall, we'd be okay, right?
I'll go back to that timeline for a second. The problem is, the winter storms happen in January through March.
Right.
So if we dredge in the fall, everything has already been obliterated and it's filled in again.
Okay.
A, a good example would be Il Pond, or Il River. In 2014, December of 2014, we did the last dredge there. By September of 2015, it filled back in again.
Mm-hmm.
So over the course of that whole eight months, the money we spent for that dredge was gone. That's one of the biggest issues right now we have in that particular area still we haven't solved, but that's kind of typical. If, Great Pond, for example, in the fall, you know, there was six feet of water there, now it's less than three feet, and that's all because of what happened by the, the storms that happened in the January through April timeframe.
Right.
And in that case, it not only affects recreational boating, it also affects the water quality. I'll go on, we're, we're keeping time because of the upcoming storm tonight.
Sure. So, my last comment is, there's always about, questions about dredging services. Barnstable County has a new dredge. I don't know if anyone's seen it, but it's out on the bulkhead, the town bulkhead off the Tides Motel. It's a massive-looking thing. We believe that it's not cost-effective for Falmouth to own and operate any dredges. One of the reasons is, if you look at our window, it's a five-month window, and that's a big asset. The county's spreading that amongst other areas. We're the major user of this dredge, so we're using most of the capacity and we're not taking the, the burden of being the owner of it. And they actually have a crew of four people that are actually on staff full-time managing that dredge. So the issue has been execution only, not because of the dredge capacity, but it's the time of year restrictions and the associated schedule compression, and that's really what the point that we wanted to make.
And also, I know that with the new, more expensive dredge, the cost of dredging is. is increasing in terms of what the, you know, the county is, has its own increased costs, and Falmouth will expect to have increased dredging costs.
And that's one of the reasons why we asked for more money last year.
Sam?
Yeah, I was curious to know what relationship you have with the beach department and their needs to nourish the beaches. Is there coordination between the two groups?
Yes, yeah. We need the beaches because when we do the dredging, we need somewhere to bring the sand.
I hear you. But it's like, two different needs. You're trying to keep, you know, ways, the navigational ways open. They're trying to re-nourish their beaches, and, I mean, obviously, they're complementary in that regard. But given the time constraints, you know, your dismissal of another dredge suggests to me that, you know, well, okay, but maybe we need to be able to get more work done in a shorter period of time. And I can't answer that question, but I'm just, want to make sure that everybody's working toward at least meeting each other's needs. And that's the question. And your comment about that beach nourishment being important for coastal resiliency was really the reason I thought that we should be looking at it, because I can see what they're doing down on the Gulf Coast, which is literally yearly coming back and building their beaches back. And for good reasons. I mean, it's to protect the properties that are past the beach, up, you know, up on the upland, so to speak.
I think when you, I'm sorry. When you have a coastal resiliency discussion, it becomes more than just the waterways and the, we're all tied together and bonded at the hip on this thing.
Right.
Well put. Megan?
I was just going to say that I don't think, you know, the dredge right now is sitting, like you said, by the Tides Motel. And so if it were, you know, an issue of just beach nourishment, and you were, you know, this is, the fall is the time of year where they could do some beach nourishment. So that's, I think, another but somewhat related conversation where they, depending on how they were doing it, if they were taking from, you know, further out where you showed your list of waivers that are needed, not needed. So I think, you know, I'm sure Beachways is having that conversation about, you know, trying to do some beach nourishment that may be complementary to what you're doing, or it may become, you know, not beaches are in a pretty critical state. It may be that, you know, they can't wait for the permitting to be waived for a project you guys are working on, and maybe they need to work on beach nourishment in another way. So I think that they're connected, but, you know, I do think that there's a window for beach nourishment that doesn't have to be constrained by some of what you told us tonight.
Really great report.
Thank you so much.
Answered a lot of questions for folks. Thanks so much, and thanks to all the committee. Appreciate all your work.
Good job, Jeff. Thanks.
Next, we have on the agenda, an update on the fire hydrant inspections and painting. Mr. Rafferty, welcome.
Are you using the...
Yep.
Do you want to have that?
I told him I was going to grill him on dredging, so he was pretty prepared.
Haven't you guys seen that dredge? It's amazing.
I haven't really, no. Yeah.
The clicker?
In my curiosity.
You got it? Okay. This one.
Other side, Steve.
Yeah. There you go. So we, Board of Selectmen asks periodically for a report on the fire hydrant, both the workings of the fire hydrants, as well as the painting. Painting, obviously, for aesthetics, and, you know, just to be sure that the town looks its best, and more importantly, so that, you know, in terms of the working ability of the hydrants, so that, you know, if that time ever comes when there is a fire, and you do need that resource there, you want to be sure that they're all ready at all times, because of course, an incident can never be predicted. We've heard in the past from Mr. Rafferty and his reports, that the fire hydrants are made of very, very durable material. Even though it's metal, it's not often that there's a, per se, a rust issue because of the way that they're made. And so the report is anticipated to cover all of those issues. You know, we, I just want to explain to everyone that the new IT director is here, and so we've put on this, this kind of trial by fire, so to speak. Just to see if he'd jump right in there.
Is he a paper manager?
I think it's because I didn't touch it.
Thank you for the introduction. I am Steve Rafferty, the water superintendent. And as you pointed out, I was here about a year ago. I talked about hydrants and how they work, the fact that they're a reliable device, but we have some work to do. So just to quickly update everybody, there's roughly 3,000 hydrants in the town of Falmouth. Every one of those dots is a hydrant, and there's a picture on the left in case nobody's ever seen a hydrant before. And since I started roughly three years ago, we've had a bit of a program to do some flushing, as well as some painting. My graphics are not the greatest, but wherever it's green on there is where we've actually gotten things flushed and tested since 2015. And the list of the areas are on the right-hand side. Primarily, we started from the eastern side of town, and we ran down towards Woods Hole at one point as well. Some good news, the new water treatment plant bends online for four months. We have really good, clean water there. So we are going to put in place a program between now and Memorial Day to open up every hydrant in the town, and move all that good water out. We're going to modify the way we do our flushing a little bit to get a bigger area done quicker, and to get good, clean water into all of the pipes. We'll be dedicating crews to that, to as much as possible. We will probably start a week from tonight, weather dependent, and there'll be a portion where we will be working at night through the downtown area, so we have the least amount of disruption to the businesses. We will be putting up the electronic billboards to warn people that this flushing program will be ongoing, and we will, on a day-to-day basis, update on the webpage for the Water Department where the flushing will be occurring. Couple of advantages to this. Number one, obviously, we get the pipes cleaned out. Number two, with the new water treatment plant working so well, and knowing in the summer we're going to have to run it a lot harder than we're running it, this will give us all a chance to practice running it at a higher rate of flow, and be ready for the big summertime rush.
And our water table right now in Long Pond is as high as it's been a few years, isn't it?
We have plenty of water. There is a little bit of an issue with that we have a Water Resource Management Act permit, and we're only allowed to take so much water per year out of Long Pond regardless of how full it is. So we'll be bumping up against that this year a little bit, but I think we can work our way around that for good reasons. The second half of the issue with fire hydrants is painting. Painting's a little, is not something that can be rushed, per se. We've had some staffing issues over the last couple of years just because people are out, or we're hiring a new person. I'm pleased and I'm grateful to the finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen, and the entire financial department. They approved adding another staff member this year, which will mean that I should have at least an individual, if not two, available through the summertime to be available for painting, so I can be a little more affirmative about how many hydrants we should get painted. Keep it in mind, we can probably do about 10 hydrants each day if a person's out there working on it. The number comes down a little bit, I'd say 150 per month, because we need to be working on dry days, and I kind of back figuring how many dry days we've had over the last two or three years. If it's like, a couple of years ago, when it didn't rain for the entire summer, it's going to be easy.
I'm going to ask you to knock on wood as well.
But we can probably get around 900 total in the period from May to October. So if there's 3,000 hydrants out there, again, a little hard to see. There's a few blue areas, primarily the Seacoast Shore area, a little bit west of that. We did the run down Woods Hole Road and back around the road race route a year and a half or so ago. So, this year, we should, again, keep moving from east towards west. We're looking at Central Ave, Davisville, Falmouth Heights, Jones Road, get into downtown if we can, and then pick up the backside of Woods Hole Road. Year from now, come back out, get into the Gifford Street, Trotting Park, Lower Sandwich Road, Thomas B. Landers and Sympowicet area. And then come out in 2019, and get into the Quaker Road, West Falmouth Highway, Old Main Street, New Silver Beach, McGansett, Valley Meet and Upper Sandwich Road, and then finally wrap it up in 2020, Maravista, Acapescot, Schumet, Hatchville, Old Barnesville Road, John Parker, Fresh Pond, and we'll coit. Now, from year to year, these areas may shift a little bit, depending upon resources, or the sense that one area may be extremely worse off than others. There's some bad hydrants out there in terms of appearance. I don't try to hide that at all. We do need to get at them and take care of them.
Could you just reiterate what you said last year about the appearance being different than the effective use of them?
Yeah. So, hydrants are fairly simple devices in the sense that they're ductile iron or cast iron bodies. All the internal components are made of bronze, so that when you turn the nut on the top to raise the internal components up, the bronze on bronze, even though it looks rusted from the outside, it's not frozen, it's not rusted on the inside. When we get to a hydrant, we take the caps off, we relubricate them, we operate it to make sure that there's no issues in it. We do find an occasional hydrant that we put on the repair list. We tend to get to any hydrant's repair within three to four weeks, depending upon parts and availability from the suppliers. Thank you.
The one thing I've sort of noticed is less about kind of the outward appearance, because you, you know, kind of addressed that previously. But, you know, obviously, I think there are a number of hydrants where the ground has kind of filled around the hydrant. I don't know if it's because people have done landscaping or overtime, but, you know, I'm thinking of, I can think of one in particular near Jack and the Beanstalk that's really almost kind of submerged. And so is part of this, I mean, I'm assuming it's kind of excavating around some, is there a standard amount that needs to be exposed, or...
The answer's a little bit of yes and no. The newer hydrants, and those are at least a couple thousand or so that we have in town, are, it's called breakaway hydrants. They're designed, if you drive into them at full force because you're not watching where you're going, the hydrant will break off. They're shear-type bolts. So you really want those bolts to be exposed. And so that's usually the criteria, by having that bolt ring exposed. As you say, parts do get built up. When we're doing the flushing program this year, we're not going to be taking the time to sort of clean off around the hydrants. We'll come back on a second pass-through on a more, what we call unidirectional flushing, which we started originally from the east coming to the west. But given the need to get all the clean water out of the pipes, it's been a while since we've opened and closed every hydrant just to be sure, and the question keeps coming up. We're taking a sort of aggressive, just get to the hydrant, open, close it, push water through it, move whatever inside the pipe out, and then come back in the following year, and you'll see us doing that cleaning around each hydrant, you know, that needs a little bit of loving care, you know, reshaping or whatever, we'll get to it then.
But you'll know right away, I mean, if you can't open the hydrant because there's too much sediment, that's going to be noted on what you're doing now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, I have 3,000 pieces of paper to check and fill out as we move along. Yep.
So you'll be making a list of whatever needs to be done as you go around this year?
Yep. As we have in the past, and, you know, recently got, heard from the Fire Department about a couple hydrants, and three and a half weeks later, those hydrants were replaced and fixed. I think you brought to our attention a couple hydrants we have on a list that were, they're Smith hydrants, we're trying to get a couple parts to rebuild them because of the corrosion on the exterior of them. Those parts should be in shortly, and we'll get taken care of as well.
And I know that on Chapquat Island, there was an immediate fix that happened pretty quickly after your request.
Already replaced, yeah. Again, somebody drives into a hydrant, or somebody brings to our attention a hydrant broken, we have like, every department, the White Board of Projects to be done, it gets up there, we shuffle things around a little bit, and get them in and get them done.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
No.
Steve, great report. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have an update on the upgrade of the Selectmen's meeting room. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Yes. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give the board an update, and thank you for your patience with this project. It has certainly not moved as quickly as I originally anticipated. When we started to look at upgrades to this room, and specifically the audio/video, it seemed like a modest project that would take a couple of months to complete, but it has turned into a bit more of an odyssey than I anticipated. So since we last spoke, the layout, after a lot of input from folks like Mary Pat Flynn, and this board, and several other boards who use this room...
FCTV?
Yes, and FCTV. We're, you know, we're still satisfied with the layout that we talked about previously, which is essentially, this table remains where it is, and we are planning to have an addition, a modular unit that's custom-built locally to blend right into this one. So that layout of the overall room has not changed. What has been more difficult to nail down with input from a number of vendors and FCTV is the technology elements. And I want to thank Mike Bottomley in the IT department, despite being short-staffed, he's been very generous with his time. And what we've sort of learned is that, you know, it would have been a lot more efficient to hire an engineer to put together, develop the specs for this project, but we've learned a lot as we worked through it. And what is a little unusual, or, you know, fairly unusual about designing the AV for a room like this, that's different from others, is that it's not just, you know, a handful of staff members who are using it. You know, we have all sorts of members of the public, a large staff, committee members, consultants, so it really needs to be designed in a way that's very user-friendly and durable. And I'm happy to say, we've finally wrestled the beast down to the ground, and we have a set of specifications that we're ready to move forward on. The quotes that we've received are well within our budget, but the low quote by a significant margin is from a vendor that is not able to start until July 1st. So that is our timeframe going forward. And I should mention specifically, the design elements that have changed is, we had been talking about three monitors, and that was, there were advantages to that in terms of the brightness during the day was much better than what you might get with a typical projector. It was not as, it created some problems for the broadcast, for FCTV, for their broadcast. So what we are now looking at is to mount a projector to the eve there, short throw projector, combined with one monitor, one smaller monitored, so that the people sitting closest to the wall will have a better angle on that, and then a second monitor on the opposite side, just to make sure that everyone in the room has a monitor that's, you know, that's not too far away. So we're pretty pleased with that. We have multiple quotes for all elements, the cameras to be replaced, the display, the audio system is another somewhat tricky part, because the, it's easy to do a PA system for this room, and it's relatively easy to do an audio system for the broadcast, but to have the PA system work in such a way that it doesn't interfere with the broadcast is the trick. We have received, you know, put together a proposal and received responses to it that we believe, we're promised that those two things are going to work. We'll, I know how complicated and difficult audio can be, so, you know, we'll give it a shot and continue to fine-tune as it goes. So I think I've pretty much covered it. The total cost of all of this, including the table and a new custom-built podium, and the podium would be, the layout is, this existing table would move back just a foot and a half, a couple feet, so that we maximize the space. And the podium will go roughly where it is, with only limited ability to move it, so, because it's going to be wired under the floor and out, so that we don't have any exposed cords, and we don't want people yanking those cords out of the ground. So, including the new podium and the addition of the table, all in, we're looking at approximately $75,000.
So it should be a better experience for folks watching at home. It should be a better experience for folks in the room to see, you know, the, you know, whatever's projected or presentations. Are we getting more seating?
The seating is going to be, it's not going to be a lot more, it will be a little more, it will be laid out better, at least the way that we're looking at it. You know, right now, it's pretty difficult if someone comes in during the middle of the meeting and they want, need to sit over on the hour-left side of the room, they have to, you know, either walk right in front of us, or walk through people sitting in the chairs. So what we'd like to do is move everything forward so that there's a walking aisle behind the last row of seats, and maintain a middle aisle, which we've been trying to do with some success, depending on the day. So we may squeeze in a few additional seats, probably not a whole lot more. I mean, right now, we could bring in some more seats. So it's going to be, again, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty similar, but I think we'll have a very efficient use of the seating. This, of course, one of the main advantages of this... This, of course, one of the main advantages of this, of rewiring the technology is that we get rid of this cart, so that dead space is, is lost.
And just a quick question on the technology, because just, you know, in the past, when I've coordinated, you know, just my own law firm and, and that technology, if you use separate vendors, when there's a problem, you get this. Was that considered in, in deciding which vendors to use? Was there one that was more comprehensive, one-stop shopping or?
Yeah, we, we ended up doing pretty well in terms of, you know, we weren't sure how many vendors were going to be able to bid the whole thing, but we did find a couple. And we are ending up going forward with the camera installation and the audio visual installation being the same vendor. Yeah.
Good news.
Megan was first.
Oh, thank you. Mine's just a quick, one quick thing about seating. I think if that's gone and there's a table here that the recording secretary can be closer, you know, that certainly would potentially open up a little bit more seating to fit people in for particularly important, you know, hearings or hearings when more folks want to attend. The other thing, if we just consider as we're kind of thinking about seating, having, having a more friendly environment for folks with different levels of ability, because that's a really hard thing if folks want to come in who, you know, have any sort of device that's helping them, whether it's a wheelchair or a walker, it's almost impossible if they don't get here before the meeting to actually get, to get into the space. So if we think about, if you're saying something about a back row, but, you know, even just some kind of designated spot or something to just make it more user-friendly for folks who want to come in and it's a more comfortable environment for them.
Really smart idea.
That's, that's a great point. If I could just follow up, I, you know, I probably should have mentioned that with, with all of the changes, if, depending on the board and how many board members there are, you know, that's the whole reason that this unit is modular. So if it's this board, we can get more chairs in under the new layout than we can now. But there are other boards like Conservation where they have 12 members plus a couple staff that they want to have, you know, at this L. And then if you've got the L going way down there like they, they need, then it, even though you get rid of this projector, you don't end up getting a lot more usable seats. But also, again, freeing up this space for this layout without the leg being extended definitely provides more space to do both, better disability access without losing the seats that we have now.
Yeah, I mean, just, it just, I know I'm getting kind of nitpicky, but even if the trash can were gone and, you know, that area, if there was some designation that that's, you know, like you see on buses, that it's a handicap area, I mean, someone could bring in, you know, their chair and be able to be right there and they wouldn't have to cut in front of everyone. Obviously, if, if it's not needed, someone can put a chair there for the night, but just, you know, the trash can can be outside and, and it just frees up a little bit more room, so it's just a friendlier environment.
Plus you're not stuck here for the whole meeting.
Yes, if, for, yeah, I mean, it just, you want folks who are, you know, with any level of ability to be able to come and go just as anyone else would without feeling uncomfortable, so.
Great, Sam.
Yeah, have you thought about having a kind of a radio-connected mic so that people who are going to be using charts, like the Conservation Commission meeting, there's always civil engineers that are coming in with their drawings and they need to have some freedom. If you're going to get rid of the mic as it is now, are you going to provide some kind of a clip-on, radio-connected mic system so they can move around? And if you're eliminating those wires, how do they talk and point away from the actual podium itself? That's just a need I think we need to worry about.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can, we can certainly add wireless mics. We, you know, we do like to minimize them because they are infamous for running out of batteries right when, you know, you most need them. So the microphone, the plant, the plan is to have a mounted microphone wired into the podium that's fairly stable, but yeah, we can certainly have wireless microphones to supplement that.
Doug?
So I'm a little disappointed that, I guess we're going to leave this projector screen in this place? Because one thing I was most interested in was the fact that we were thinking about moving the podium over here to address the board and the crowd and not block the view. And now if the podium stays there, it's just, it's really not that functional. It's good for us to be able to see the presenter, but the audience is really blocked.
Well, I think we could, you know, what we looked at is, you know, it's, it's as much human nature actually as it is the setup of the room right now. If I were presenting and, you know, and there was more than one person in the audience, you simply rotate the podium so that it faces this wall. And that way you can, you know, you can really address both the board and the audience at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Oh, and the other, yeah, so I guess the other part of that is there will be a monitor built into the podium, so the presenter doesn't have to look at the screen in order to follow along with their own presentation. So they truly can, you know, they can be facing the audience, they have access to the...
They're going to still want to use the pointer?
Yeah, I mean, there are ways, actually, there are ways to do that on the tablet.
Oh, okay.
But...
So the table is going to pretty much stay oriented as is? Because I thought we were going to slide it down and shift it back and make room over here.
I think we're going to make room in that side.
The limiting factor is Conservation Commission with 12 members.
Yeah. It's a complicated trade-off.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you for all of your very hard work over a long period of time and everyone else who contributed, Mary Pat Flynn, FCTV, all the folks you already mentioned.
I just want to just clarify, so we're, the lower bid is starting in July?
Right.
Okay, so just so folks know that, you know, that's, that you've done all of that hard work and we're going to take that, we're going to wait because it saves us money.
That's too bad, we'll have to take some extra time off in July.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. The next item on the agenda is an update on town meeting directive concerning Liberty Green. Town council is here to give us an update. Oops, sorry, Frank's here just in case. I guess Julian's going to headline it.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We give some summary comments about where we are, happy to do so, and happy to have town council supplement or assist with any questions, should the board have any. As the boards are aware, we were given a direction at recent town meeting to explore the acquisition of Liberty Green without, of course, exercising any eminent domain. And I am working closely, in close collaboration with Town Council Frank Duffy on this, in this process. We have had an appraisal conducted of the property in, in question, and we have had a confirmation with the inspector general that, given the circumstances, we are bound to be proceeding with formal procurement in this matter. And with town council's able assistance, we've contacted the owners and the developers, representatives of both. There will be a, a formal RFP process, request for proposal, as part of the necessary procurement, and that is going to be forthcoming. We'll have a, really a template of that basic process, which we can share with the members of the board here at your next regular meeting. And that RFP will require, hopefully, I shouldn't say require, but I say hopefully will result in a favorable response from the owners slash and developers of the Liberty Green, Liberty Green area, so that we can proactively move forward with possibilities, again, without exploring or having available to us the eminent domain tools that municipalities can normally exercise. And I think that is sort of a summary of where we are at the moment. There are a lot of steps involved and a lot of moving parts and a lot of, I don't want to say hidden, but unforeseen complexities, given what we're dealing with in regard to this challenging issue. Happy to answer questions, should town meeting members, excuse me, should Sleckman have any with the assistance of town council?
Sure, so what would be, after this RFP is issued, what would be the next expected step?
Well, that's going to depend on whether we get any, we get reasonable responses to the RFP. We're counting on the fact that we will have one, perhaps more than one, response to the RFP because the RFP will be for an affordable housing site within certain parameters, which will generally govern some limitations to that particular geographic site, but we cannot be totally limited to that geographic site only as part of procurement. So it involves some challenging narrative and wordsmithing in terms of how the procurement process rolls out. But presuming that we have a response from the owners and developers in Liberty Green, then we can begin a potential negotiation process with them, depending upon what is included in the RFP responses.
Thank you, Doug.
And just to remind people of the announcement you made earlier, that on April 4th at 9:30, there'll be a site meeting with the Housing Appeal Committee and a 10 o'clock meeting at the Herman Room. So the process is moving forward in the other direction also, at the same time that we're looking into creating the RFP. And so the developers continue to appeal the decision of our zoning board.
Right, and that was based upon certain conditions that the zoning board put on the development that the developer disagreed with.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Doug?
I don't have any questions about this, but I thought of one that I forgot to ask on the last subject, so when we're done with this, could I ask another question?
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Appreciate that report and we'll look for more information as we go forward. And before we move on, Doug?
I just forgot to ask, what type of improvements will we get as far as sound and, you know, transmission and improvements? Because when we're at home trying to watch these, you really can't hear very well and it's muffled and even the cameras aren't really good. Is there any upgrades to those?
Well, on the, let me answer the video one first because I have a better answer.
Okay.
There should be, there will be a much improvement in the video quality of the broadcast and as well as the online streaming. And that's, so all of the cameras will be replaced and that should be a fairly substantial improvement.
Okay.
The audio is much trickier because some of it is technology and some of it is user-driven. So if we sit back and talk like this, it might not pick up on the microphone too well, but if we all, you know, sit forward and speak into the microphone, the audio is going to be much better. So the, you know, there, where we are spending money and we are expecting an improvement, again, is for those meetings where there's a large crowd and people in the back can't hear, that will be much better. Because right now, we have no PA system, there's no amplification of the audio in this room because the PA system creates interference with the broadcast. So that audio should definitely be improved inside this room. It's the audio that the, you know, for the broadcast, I don't want to, I don't want to make huge promises there because, again, a lot of that is user-driven.
We need a floor director to boom microphones.
Megan, and you, when you're talking about the PA system, it'll amplify from the podium, right, as well?
Absolutely, all microphones.
Because that tends to be, I think, the, you know, the hardest part is if someone's facing this way and if they're a little bit soft-spoken, you really can't hear at all in the background. So that's, I mean, I think that's a huge improvement. That's great, thank you.
Well, thanks for letting me go back.
Of course. Next item on the agenda is a request for a sound, sign variance for off-premises signs, Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society buffet breakfast. The request is for five signs, location 762 Sandwich Road, 71 East Falmouth Highway, 931 East Falmouth Highway, Route 151 Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 408 Carriage Shop Road. And it's for the first week of each month from Monday through Sunday, May to November 2018.
I would move approval, it's the same sign, it's the same format that we've had in the past, first Sunday of, of each month, you get to go for an amazing breakfast for, I don't know, under $10.
It is a great thing.
I'll second that, my favorite breakfast.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next we have on the agenda, a vote to affirm town council's draft of conditions on the Falmouth Pier 37 boathouse license. Mr. Duffy, do you want to kind of give a headline, outline? Really appreciate the license holders attending. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair and Frank Duffy, Town Council. Following the meeting last, two weeks ago, I put together a draft decision for you in which I have gone through the history of the hearing. As you know, we had three, three sessions. And before the final hearing, we changed the notice to inform the licensee that one of the possible remedies would be a change in hours of operation, which requires a special notice to be published, which we have done. The board at its meeting on the 20th, on the 4th of December, actually made some findings and I incorporated them into a decision. One, of course, is that the boathouse is the holder of a seasonal all-alcoholic beverage pouring license and that there was a summary of 11 incidents at the licensed premises during the summer of 2017 on the date set forth above. And there were actually eight dates between May 21st and August 20th of the summer of 2017, in which the Falmouth Police Department responded to incidents at the licensed premises. The reports were confirmed by, reported by the chief of police and confirmed by a patrol sergeant of the department. The licensee basically offered no evidence to contradict the accuracy of any of the reports. The board made a finding that there was ineffective management of the boathouse and the failure to maintain order and decorum on the premises and in the immediate area. So the report established that these 11 occasions, the Falmouth Police Department responded to events at the establishment and to preserve peace and good order, to protect the patrons and the public, and that the responders were, these responses placed a severe demand upon the personnel and resources of the Falmouth Police Department. The report also confirmed the potential danger to responding police officers, patrons and other employees of the boathouse, the public and the immediate neighborhood. You also made a finding based upon a document that was introduced into evidence at the last meeting that on the 18th of January of this year, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission determined that the licensee had served a intoxicated patron that occurred on August 18th of 2017, which is exactly the same timeframe of these other events that were occurring in Falmouth and the police department was responding. The Alcoholic Beverage Commission in Boston suspended the license for four days, but held it in abeyance to determine if there are any future violations. So it's not a suspension to be served right now. Now, one of the things you have to consider is that this is a seasonal license and it renews starting on April 1st, and I believe that comes up next, two weeks from now, the issue.
Correct.
So the conditions that you are imposing tonight or determining are appropriate responses to the situation at the, at the boathouse must be incorporated somehow into the renewal of the license. Now, the licensee was here the other night and they presented a security plan, which they had reviewed with the chief of police and with the planning board, the staff of the planning board. And that there was several highlights of this plan, one of which would be low-impact LED lighting in the parking lot to be operated between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM Thursday through Sunday. There would be security cameras in the parking lot, there would be dedicated parking spaces for taxicabs, Uber and other conveyances for the patrons. There'd be additional security staff hired by the licensee and assigned to the parking lot where we understand most of the problems occurred, and that the parking lot would be closed whenever the building was at capacity. Now, this was all identified on a plan, which unfortunately was hanging right up here on the wall the last time we were here, but somehow or other it got disappeared.
I believe.
So it was my intention to review that plan and incorporate the terms that are referenced there into this license. I haven't seen it and that's something that I'll have to do, that now that Mr. McLaughlin has brought it back.
So our...
I'm leaving here tonight.
I could, I can bring it back, I can send PDF copies.
All of that would help, Madam Chair.
So our action tonight would be subject to your approval of, of the plan after you have a chance to review it and it will be inserted?
Yes, I, I prepared this based, because I couldn't view the plan, I prepared this by watching the television rerun of this show several times to figure out what had been talked about.
Okay.
So, then there was also a condition that the licensee implement staff training of the serving of intoxicated persons. This training to be provided by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission and was represented to you that the ABCC said they could do this, although we didn't actually hear from the ABCC. And that finally, that the licensee shall implement a practice of issuing no trespassing notices to patrons who repeatedly act in an unruly manner on or about the premises, including waiting lines or in the parking lot. Now, a no trespassing notice is a form, which I guess will be by the door and they can simply fill it out and hand it to someone and you send a copy to the police department and that person's basically banned from, from setting foot on that property for the future.
Right, and the, and the police department has those forms ready and was provided to them. Right, and the police department has those forms ready and was provided to-
Yes, and if the copy is sent to the police department, and the person who received the no trespassing notice is noticed upon the property, they can be arrested without a warrant.
And just, I know this is your draft copy, so I'm just, when you were reading, you said "in an unruly manner," and I just think that the, it says "madder" there. So just since you're still working on the draft, I think it just has to change to "manner."
Okay. Okay. But I sent this to, through Mr. Suso, to you to review. If there are comments or suggestions, now's the time to make the point, and we can wrap this up.
Has anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
I think it's a very accurate summary of what has taken place over the period of three hearings and what we discussed with the licensee the last time in terms of a plan going forward, so.
In that case, is there a motion?
What action do you need for us to know?
Well, I'll make a final draft that can be circulated to you per comment or anything, but Mr. Suso typically signs these based upon a vote of the board.
So I'd move to direct Mr. Suso to sign a copy once it's finished by Attorney Duffy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the assignment of town meeting articles. And we'll just kind of run through on a summary fashion and kind of discuss which member of the Board of Selectmen may be, you know, the main person to provide comment for certain articles. Also, maybe on attendance of precinct meetings, might be, you know, kind of more of the spokesperson on a particular article. I'm guessing, let's see, the first one I think would be Article 7, which is the stretch code. And Mr. Suso, if I skip one, or if I, if I focus on one that there's no need to, please just speak up.
I guess I'll try to research that and present that.
I think that that makes all the sense in the world. You know, you talk the talk.
You can walk the walk.
Madam Chair, may I just interject?
Sure.
As you recall, we had a representative from the state offer to come to the board's next meeting on the 26th and make a very brief presentation on the stretch code that might facilitate what Selectman Brown is talking about in terms of this going forward and provide information. So we're going to go ahead and pursue that if that's agreeable.
Absolutely.
Very good.
So that should be some help. Sam?
As part of that presentation, will they be talking about any of the other qualifications that we need to meet in order to be able to become a green community?
The, that's a great question. They were not going to focus on that. They were going to focus on the stretch code, so that we could facilitate adoption of it. But I think they'll be knowledgeable about some of these other elements, and I will certainly bring that to their attention.
Since they sent us a letter when they were, we were denied, it would be nice if they reviewed that again and just reminded us of what needs to be squared away in order to make us eligible. Thank you.
Let's see, I think the next one might be appropriate, 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 appropriate. I'm thinking, I guess down to 23.
Well, what about 10? Which is a new classification.
Yeah, those are kind of managerial things.
Okay, oh, fine.
Yeah, if that's agreeable, I think probably-
It'll be a finance committee.
Finance committee. So probably 23, substance abuse.
Correct.
Is there anyone who feels-
I'll be happy to do that, that's my subkey.
That's your thing?
Pretty straightforward, so.
24, the change with respect to Chief Dunn. I'm going to take that one. Next one would be Article 25, which is the Andrews, and I guess 25 and 26, do they, I don't know if that's a continuation here.
25 is only tangentially related to the farm, per se. That's the easement.
Right.
Old water easement issue.
And we do have a local attorney who's prepared to comment on 25.
So we can skip that?
Correct.
Great, okay, so 26, next.
I'll take that one.
Okay, Doug, that's skipping a single session. Next, we have the fingerprint background checks.
I don't mind doing that, if that's, that's fine, I can do that.
Great. Okay, next we have, I think, Article, adjustments note.
What about 28?
28. That's solid waste.
It's a petition.
Oh, they'll do it.
Yep, they'll do that.
But they're petitioning us.
They'll have a presentation for it.
Okay.
They're petitioning town beat.
Are we up to 37 and 38, Andrews Farm?
Well, we have a, just an update for folks. Mr. Johnson Staub, do you anticipate having, I know you'd put together the presentation last, do we just anticipate having a, something, some visual for folks to just kind of see the numbers on that?
Yes, yep, yep, I'd be happy to present that if you like.
Great, is anyone else interested in that? Okay, we'll leave it to you.
I think we just, I think people need to know the numbers, and I know Mr. Johnson Staub has been-
Been working on that.
So 37, and just to be clear, so 37, you're talking about Article 37, which is the appropriation? So that will be a PINCOM article, but I'll certainly be prepared to address it.
It's the 39,072.
Yes.
Right.
Just to kind of explain to people the rules, right?
Yes.
So 38 and 39 are in the Selectmen's court.
Does anyone speak, want to speak to the Andrews Farm in particular?
So 38 is transferring control from CONCOM to AGCOM.
I wouldn't mind advocating for that, if you'd like.
Okay, Doug, 38. And you want to do 39, since it's farm-related as well?
Sure.
That's a very technical one, and we'd be happy to work with you on that. I think Pat Harris is probably best suited to address detailed questions, but we can certainly work with you on some explanatory remarks, if you like.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's it. Did I skip one?
May I just say that in some cases, I think we provide backup and just a perspective without necessarily being the person that explains the article.
Right.
Right.
And I think you need to think that way strategically, because sometimes it's better off to let other people step up and even hear the discourse, and then come in with a point that might elevate a particular perspective.
Right.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, just, you know, just to that point, substance abuse, someone from Substance Abuse Commission is probably going to want to talk about Article 23. It's more appropriate to come from them, or even from, you know, Suzie, to talk about why that's needed, and, you know, certainly they can add to it. But I think you're absolutely right, Sam, that it's usually coming from-
Right, and just let, so you might want to let Megan know ahead of time.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda are the minutes of meetings. First, we have the public session for January 27, which was a joint meeting, one of my favorites. We got a lot, actually, a lot of, a lot of subsequent action has come out of this joint meeting. You know, we, Selectmen just really put the parties together, especially with the accessory bylaw, and that's really getting improved as we speak, and committees are doing their own joint meetings. Any issue on the minutes?
Yes, on page two, in the second paragraph that's shown there on the Charlotte Harris, I think there's some-
Harris, right.
Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S.
Yep.
Let's see. All right. I'm sorry, on page three, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th paragraph, you have SM noted it, last sentence, SM noted it, that should be Sue Moran, I presume. Would you take credit for that?
Sure. I'm kind of giving someone else responsibility.
Delegating.
Delegating.
A question I had, which is a meaning question, on page five, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th paragraph, Mr. Suso reminded all the town has unilateral authority to implement, I was wondering, it seemed to me like it should be, does not have unilateral authority, but I'm appealing to you, Julian, for an interpretation of what it should say.
May I, may the board, would the board allow me to take another look at that and make sure?
Yeah.
We can get back on that. So we'll hold these minutes, subject to that clarification.
One other clarification. I'd love to take credit for being there, but that was the day that my daughter was sick, so I wasn't present. But thanks for having my back.
Great. All right, so we'll hold that one with those corrections. Next, we have a public session for February 26.
I move approval of February 26 open session meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the executive session for February 26.
Session one?
Yes.
I move approval not to release to public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have session two for that date.
I move approval not to release to public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have individual Selectmen reports. We'll start with you, Doug, if that's all right?
I don't have any big reports this week, just attended a couple of meetings, nothing special.
The usual. Sam?
Yes, quickly, you and I were at the Cape Cod Select, and Julian too, at the Cape Cod Select, Counselors, Cape Cod Selectmen and Counselors Association meeting, where we had reports from our legislative representatives, Randy Hunt, who's not representing Falmouth, Julian Seer, one of our senators, and Vinnie DiMascio, our senator, all attended and gave us really in-depth reports on things that are happening up at the state legislature. Maybe I could just hit on a few of those things without going into any detail. Randy Hunt reported that the state has taken a pretty aggressive role in trying to control healthcare costs, and they actually think they've made some successes, and they're sort of strong-arming some of the elements. Of course, there are some elements that they can't control very well. The GIC policy that state workers have access to, actually, the premiums will be a little bit lower in FY 2019, so that's a pretty good indicator. Residential broadband has been something that Representative Hunt has been pushing, particularly up in the Sandwich area where, that he represents. And they're looking at some options, literally across all of Barnstable County, with some promising possibilities. And the last thing that all of the representatives and senators talked about were the whole peer drug, the drug addiction issues, and some of the things that they're trying to put out there in terms of treatment and recovery efforts. So without going into any of the details. I think Julian Seer, our senator from Down Cape, emphasized was some of the climate change issues, the housing production issues, wastewater initiatives, and funding those. The rooms occupancy tax, which was a discussion that all of the representatives of the legislature weighed in on, and some possibilities for a 2.75% alcohol surtax over all of these. This is basically to provide funding for wastewater treatment challenges that we all have. And that would go across, but it would be an opt-in on a municipality-by-municipality basis. But it would be at least a funding stream to help pay for some of this, you know, cleanup of our nitrogen-polluted estuaries and treat, doing a more effective job of treating our sewage. And then also mentioning the Clean Water Initiative and how they can actually help support us in that regard. Vinnie DiMascio mentioned in particularly that they're pressing for an environmental bond bill, something that was not funded in previous years, and specifically focused on giving opportunities to towns to improve cultural resiliency, make grants available to us. So that's something we need to watch in the future, but at least we know that they're advocating for those options. Mentioned that revenues are up. He credited the federal tax changes, and that's a good thing, but that's a transient, as far as we know. The Ready Day Fund at the state level is depleted, so I suspect they're planning to recharge that with some of those additional revenues and not necessarily lower our taxes. He pointed out that they're working toward, trying to increase the cap on H2V visas for those businesses that rely on immigrant labor during the summertime to support our territories and oriented businesses. Of course, the bridge closures that the Army Corps of Engineers is threatening us with, and how they can manage those. And then finally, the issues relative to the nuclear power plant, and the fact that after Entergy closes that plant, there will be 3,000 spent fuel rods there, and the long-term management of that, because there, at this point, from a national level, is no plan in place to do anything with those fuel rods. They're going to remain right at that site, so there's needless to say, an ongoing overhead to manage those spent fuel rods for, in perpetuity. And the question is, who's going to pay for them, and how is it going to get paid for? So those were some of the things. I might say an apology for our state reps, Dave Vera and Dylan Fernandez, they were previously committed to attend committee hearings at the State House and were not able to join us. But not because they are, you know, very much involved in our issues, because they certainly are. Second thing I'm going to report on, and then I'll shut up, in view of the hour and the impending storm. I attended the CPC annual needs assessment meetings, and clearly, housing is one of the needs that kept coming up in many forms, and I have to say, it was, it's very difficult. I know we've gotten a few emails, when you have somebody who shows up and says, "I'm looking for an apartment, I only need a one-bedroom apartment, but I haven't been able to find one anywhere." And we had a woman actually come to that meeting and say, "Can anybody give me a lead?" And then to hear the Falmouth Housing Authority say that they have over 1,500 people who are looking for housing in Falmouth, and they have no answers to those needs. So that was something that surfaced that I thought needed to be elevated because it ran continuously. A lot of questions about how fairly CPC, no, the town has been allocating money toward open space versus housing versus historic preservation versus recreation, and whether, when you look at historically where we've spent most of our money, whether we shouldn't be looking at balancing that investment that we've been making. And just raising that question, and I think it's a legitimate one for them to be looking at. Special needs from a historic preservation standpoint was from Ed Had Ed, but he's pointing out that a lot of the historic buildings are owned privately. And CPC is limited in terms of how they can invest in upgrades or historic preservation where it's a privately-owned building, and trying to figure out a way where we have buildings that we clearly want preserved, how we can help those owners do some work, it only has to be on the outside, so that we maintain some of the historic character that they represent in our town. So that was another issue that was, and then, of course, the whole recreation issue of the fields and the conditions of the fields was raised, and questioning about how, how the town could do a better job of that, and whether CPC has a role in terms of allocating funds for those purposes. And I did attend, one other item is Jonathan Decker's Eagle Court of Honor this Saturday, and what a pleasure it is to go and hear the achievement, about the achievements of a young man that clearly is an outstanding citizen in our town. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Megan.
No, I don't, I think, since snow is coming, no.
Pass.
The only thing I was going to report on is I did hear from someone concerned about their electricity with Eversource, and their power was out, they called Eversource, Eversource responded by saying, "Oh, it's on private property, it's not our problem." And I guess I did say I would come back to the board to find out what recommendation we can give, and I think it is still just to call Eversource, but they didn't have any power, and Eversource responded, "Well, it's not our issue, it's on private property." And I guess, with the suggestion they call an electrician about that, but this is the first I'd heard of that being an appropriate answer.
So wires were down, basically from the street to their house, and it was-
They just didn't have power, and they'd heard a big explosion, and other, and Eversource responded, "Well, it's a private property issue."
Tough to know, because we don't have all the facts.
Yeah, if we have an address, we'll be happy to explore that a bit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can I just report that breakfast at Seacrest, the food was really good?
That was the Cape and Island Selectmen's meeting.
Oh, you're there.
Mr. Suso- Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Thursday morning, I was pleased to attend a meeting hosted at Joint Base Cape Cod to review and discuss the new initiative, the Massachusetts Army National Guard Community Partnership Program, and I know that Selectmen Chair Sue Moran and some other representatives of the town were also in attendance, along with Police Chief Dunn, Public Works Director Jack, and others. Representatives of other Upper Cape communities were also there. We'll monitor this expanded initiative opportunity for potential future collaborative programs. As the board's aware, we're already involved in multiple strategic collaborations with Joint Base Cape Cod, including a transfer station, water system collaborative, and the wastewater initiative, which we have talked about recently. Also attended the Tuesday evening, the Finance Committee meeting in the past week, and their review and deliberations continue. Was notified earlier this evening by the Chair of the Finance Committee that their meeting tomorrow night is being canceled, and it will be rescheduled due to concerns about the weather. Also wanted to make a couple of comments about the recent storm event, if I may.
Please.
To supplement the comments made by Selectman Braga, and I appreciate those comments very much, but if I could provide a little bit of a summary, Madam Chair?
Please.
As of 8:00 AM on Monday, March 5, that was the Monday following that very difficult nor'easter storm. Through the remarkable restoration efforts, 256 customers remained without power from Eversource Town from over 17,000 during the height of that weekend storm emergency, and those 256 customers were ultimately restored, perhaps with the exception of the private property to which Selectman Jones just referred. The final restoration work, of course, continues. I do want to thank Eversource and their supplemental out-of-state crews, some of whom I, whom I met on job sites, for facilitating the more expeditious storm recovery than would have been possible otherwise. I'm also grateful for extraordinary public safety response departments, police, fire, public works for their diligent around-the-clock efforts, which have been noted already, in assisting in supporting our residents while facilitating a return to normalcy from the outset of the late winter storm on Friday, which was that first Friday in March, through the weekend, and as of Monday, March 5. My thanks to Fire Chief, Emergency Operations Director Mike Small, to Police Chief Ed Dunn, Public Works Director Ray Jack, all of whom I were regularly communicating with throughout that weekend storm event and the recovery process. Now, due to the work of their departments, Falmouth has been able to experience a much more prompt storm recovery. Public Works early worked to remove down trees and limbs from the road rights of way from Friday evening forward facilitated a more prompt storm recovery and the necessary work of Eversource to restore power. I also want to thank Communications Administrator Dave Diogo and his colleagues in Falmouth's Consolidated Communications Center, also referred to, for their continued tireless support of public safety efforts and citizens in general during this public safety emergency. My thanks to all those involved in staffing and supporting Falmouth's temporary overnight shelter at the high school, which provided a welcome respite for over a dozen persons overnight on Saturday night. I thank all those who staffed and supported Falmouth's Emergency Operations Center during that long weekend, providing critical support and guidance to residents during this storm recovery. Selectman Jones noted that we will again be staffing that Emergency Operations Center beginning 7:00 AM tomorrow morning in support of residents and throughout this storm. I also thank Falmouth residents for their patience and support and guidance, excuse me, and emergency operations were underway beginning Friday evening and throughout the weekend. I also thank residents for respecting and supporting the necessary traffic detours and temporary delays due to the storm emergency. And finally, I thank all of those watching for assisting their friends and neighbors to help ensure their safety during this temporary storm event. By reaching out to our neighbors, we really define what true community is all about. And lastly, if any are out there during the past storm event, or the one that we will be encountering overnight tonight, if your power is interrupted and is not restored, know that diligent restoration continues. I will give Eversource's storm outage number. That's 1-800-592-2000. Do not hesitate to call that storm power outage line if you have an interruption in your power in your home. Also, the town manager's office remains staffed. We are at 508-495-7320, and as noted, Town Hall is scheduled to remain open tomorrow during the storm, and we are at the service of residents. And lastly, as per usual, emergency calls should go to 911, as they always should during any time of emergency operations. The Emergency Operations Center supplements those calls, but those are fundamentally for non-emergency purposes. Let's see. I was pleased, just a note, I was pleased to serve senior residents at the Senior Center for the St. Patrick's Day luncheon today, which is a much look forward to annual event. And lastly, I will also wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day coming up this Saturday, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
That's excellent, and I really heartfully appreciate your, you know, commending the, you know, everyone from the emergency folks to the, you know, to the neighbors and to, you know, and Eversource. When there were winds that were recorded, I understand, up to 80 miles an hour, and part of the issue is they have those big cherry pickers that you can't really use until the winds have subsided a little bit. So, and I know they had, there was a guy from Texas or something in our neighborhood, a supervisor, so there really was a great effort by all. Megan?
I just wanted to say thank you to Julian for the summary emails that we got at all hours of the day and night, so, you know, I know you're up getting this information, putting it all together, and sending it to us so that we have a sense of what's going on, because a lot of times, you know, if power is out or something's happening, people do reach out if they know a Selectman or somebody knows, and they're asking what's going on. Or you see it on Facebook where people are saying, "I don't understand what's happening." It's really helpful to be able to have a resource and say to folks, you know, "This is what's going on," or, you know, when we had the power outage after the fact on Gifford Street because a tree fell in town, you know, Main Street was dark, and people are saying, "What's happening?" To be able to just explain, you know, "It's being worked on, and, you know, relief will probably come soon" is really helpful. So, we greatly appreciate you putting all of that information together so it's easily accessible for us.
Thank you.
Very helpful, and it shows the way we all work together. I just want to make, in terms of upcoming agendas, Senator Seer has a nice presentation on the hotel tax. I'd like us to make a request for someone to come and report, and then if we can get that date ahead of time and announce it at a prior meeting. And then, just quickly, Peter, I want to thank you for the tremendous amount of really collection and interpretation of data from the live survey that you made and provided to the board.
Yeah.
And that is on the website, pretty much? If you could just speak to that for a second?
Sure. So, we have posted on the website now the original verbatim from the live survey and an executive summary, and we have updates to both of those that will be posted to the website this week. We've also tried to call some options for the board to think about in terms of follow-up actions from ideas flowing out of the live survey, so those, as you know, are in a memo, but just so the public knows that the board has not put it on a shelf and that it continues to be a, something, you know, an event and a survey, if you will, that...
An action.
An action that continues to inform the board's future plans.
Absolutely, and in fact, for the board, you know, when you have a chance to get through all that in as much detail as you want, if we could just maybe at the next agenda make a note to go ahead and approve those priorities or suggest others, so something to think about for next time. Anything else on Mr. Johnson stuff?
No, that's it.
One other quick agenda question, just so I can check this off my list, but I did have a question from the Chair of the Recreation Committee. If they are on our agenda for March 19, I think they had asked to be on the agenda, so if we can just follow...
Next meeting's not till the 26th.
Okay.
And I'll look at that. I won't know until that.
That solves, okay, they have a conflict because they were, I think this is, there was some confusion. They're also in front of the school board, so, on the 19th, so, if we can just make a note, and I'll follow up with you about the 26th.
They should go to the school first. They definitely...
They are. Because if they're going there the 19th, they'll come to us after.
Perfect.
Will we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
And good luck.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.